Everybody ready to go?
I'm so like a block.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, January 27, 2025, and this is the 2025 Reorganization Meeting for the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting have been provided through the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and post on municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the board secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the board. Fire exits are located in east and west sides of council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to come kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I will now take roll call. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
James Benano?
Here.
Jim Henry is absent. Jen Souter is absent. Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Present.
Bob Zuckerberg?
Close, Zuckerman.
Why do I have Zuckerberg?
Zuckerman.
Someone was thinking about Facebook.
That was a autocorrect. That is.
Maybe it wasn't autocorrect.
Hi, Bob Zuckerman. Catherine McLallan?
Here.
Vice Chair Mike Goonin?
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. We're going to start with the administrative piece of this, the reorg of this board. Okay. Would you like to start?
Yeah, we need to get a nomination for...
Oh, no, the appointments.
Well, I think they're all of record.
They're all of record?
Yes.
Okay.
Adam Secretary, all the appointments are of record from the mayor and council?
Absolutely.
The only thing we didn't have was a written resolution or documentation for the mayor being the Class 1 member. But we know that the council took that formal action. We just didn't get the paperwork on it yet. But he is certain to be Class 1 member. We have a number of new members, so everybody is eligible.
Right, the only difference is that on a, just a minor snafu, that Bob Zuckerman at this is going to be an alternate one. In the first resolution, he was not mentioned as an alternate one. He was mentioned as a member. Catherine McLaughlin was mentioned as alternate two. There is a resolution going into play to the council at the next council meeting, so that that's going to be rectified. So that Bob Zuckerman is alternate one. Catherine McLaughlin is alternate two. And Jeremy is moved up to a permanent member. So that will all be in the next resolution. But because we have so many people that are out today, it doesn't matter. Everybody gets to vote.
Full board is nine members. We have nine members here, so all nine members can participate.
Excellent. Okay. First item we have is that we need a motion for a temporary chairperson.
I'm going to nominate Barbara Kerzak.
Second.
Discussion? None. Adam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mayor Moore?
This is for temporary.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Jim Henry? Oh, I'm sorry. I spaced out, okay. Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Kerzak?
You know what?
Yes.
You can vote for yourself. I've always felt that you shouldn't. But you can.
Okay. Want to vote for yourself?
It's okay.
Okay.
It's okay. We got a lot of these to go through.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Let's get a, well, actually, board secretary should be nominated.
Okay, board secretary, nominate Marie Rodriguez.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Okey dokey. I have Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Hi.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
The temporary board attorney, I nominate Jack Serpico.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move forward to the nominations and appointments of the 2025 offices. Can I get a nomination for a chairperson?
I nominate Barbara Kerzak.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please. And in this case, I don't think you should vote.
Okay. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Nomination for vice chairperson, I'd like to nominate Mike Goonin.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Board secretary, I nominate Marie Rodriguez.
Second. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo? Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
For board attorney, I nominate Jack Serpico.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Yes, second.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nomination for the conflict attorney, or the Beekman?
Beekman.
Beekman and Beekman?
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Dan seconded.
Dan.
Yeah, you're right.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
A question to the attorney?
Yes.
Beekman and Beekman was an attorney of mine when I purchased a property recently. Should I then recuse myself from the...
Sure, why not? When in doubt, step back.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
For board planner, I nominate CCH.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Moore?
Present.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Jim Henry? Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
Now, we have, here's a situation that we have here with conflict board planner and conflict board engineer. Today, we just received their rates that I believe that Marie put in front of you, and the increase in their rates. And the rates are, I just took a quick look at them, and they are in line with others that we have, where all the rest of the professionals, we already reviewed all their rates and spoke about it in executive session a while back. So I don't see an issue with these rates as far as the changes from last year to this year as opposed to everybody else that we've received. So I'm going to nominate TNM as our conflict board planner.
Second. Discussion.
Just as quick as possible discussion. We didn't use the conflict planner or engineer at all last year, right?
We, I don't even know if we used them once. Maybe.
It might have been one.
Maybe there might have been one.
Maybe the beginning of the year before we heard about it.
Yeah, they had to recuse themselves inside on something, and they stepped in.
Great.
Ready for a discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
For board engineer, I nominate Leon S. Avakian.
Second.
Move it.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
For conflict board engineer, nominate TNM.
Second.
Discussion.
We also didn't use them as engineer last year. I don't even think once.
No, I don't think we did at all.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
For board recording systems, I nominate AP-TV.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mike Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
All right, for the committees, I'd like just to state that for the Design Review Committee, what we'd like to do this year, and I believe that we did it a bit last year, is that once an application comes up that needs a design review, I vote that the people that are passionate about that project be on that Design Review Committee for that particular project, which seems to have worked last time as well. If there's any discussion that anybody would like to have about that, if that's okay? And I think that we've had maybe, what, maybe two design reviews? Maybe last year? Maybe?
Maybe two.
Maybe two.
I was just going to say, I really like this proposal because you have to be interested to do a DRC and available. So it works nicely, I think.
Okay. All right. The next committee we have is a Bylaw Policy Committee. I'd like to, we've had some discussions, and I'd like to nominate that Jeremy be on it. Yvonne will be our fearless leader. Jim Henry has expressed interest. And I'd like to nominate that Catherine be an alternate on that. She has expressed interest in that.
Second.
And we didn't meet at all last year.
Yeah, we didn't meet at all. Well, this year, there will be a meeting.
Any discussion? Oh, please.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
Next one is the Master Plan Committee. There were, the intention that this year, there may be a meeting or two at the end of this year, but the heavy lifting will be next year, 2026 and 2027. But I'd like to, I spoke to some folks, and I'd like to nominate Mike Goonin. Yvonne will be on it, James Benano, and as an alternate, Jen Souter, though she doesn't know that she will be. I did ask her, but she didn't tell me. But I would also like to be on it. But we can only have four people on it, no matter what. So I'd like to have Jen on there just for sustainability if we get to one at that section, so when we pull her in, when we have to pull her in.
Why can't you only have four?
Because then you've got a quorum.
Five would be a quorum.
Five is a quorum? Even though we only have nine members?
Five out of nine is a quorum.
Yes. So I can't have five.
Right, because you can have four.
That's where I'm going. I'm going with Mike, Yvonne, James, and myself. And when, if Jen, if Jen isn't alternate, so one of us will step back.
I heard you wrong, my bad.
I'm sorry. Then one of us will step back for that meeting. So we'll never have five.
Second.
Goonin, Yvonne, James. So technically, Barbara, you are on, but you'll alternate with Jen Souter.
I may, or James may.
Somebody got it.
Somebody will alternate.
Gotcha, okay.
If Jen...
The committee is composed of no more than four with an alternate.
That's right. No more than four, and Jen's an alternate.
Oh, work.
And if she says no, then we'll have to rethink that. Okay?
I have an alternate.
Then we don't have an alternate.
You had a motion and a second, I think?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Can someone remind me who made the motion and who seconded?
Mayor Moore?
I'm Ray and John.
And John, got it.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo? Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Do you need to vote on the Design Review Committee? At the ad hoc?
Do we have to vote on it that it's ad hoc? The Design Review Committee?
Well, you can vote to structure it that way.
Yeah, sure. Okay. I propose that the Design Review Committee is an ad hoc committee?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo? Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
The 2025 Planning Board Official Newspapers, I nominate that it's the Coaster and Asbury Park Press?
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo? Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
And I guess that we didn't adopt the meetings yet? Meeting minute? No?
We have to do formally now.
All right, let's go.
It's just a formal...
Okay. All right, I'd like to adopt the 2025 Planning Board meeting schedule.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
James Benano?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo? Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McLallan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
I believe we have done it. We have a resolution.
The only thing, just a little point of order. Tonight, you went with me first. Last year, we did it in alphabetical order, so if we can go back to that, all resolutions from here on out, no problem.
Yep.
Thank you.
We have one resolution for approval, the amendment for Somerset, Asbury Park Renewal LLC. All changes have been made up through anything received until about 4:00 p.m. I reinserted the HEAC clause, Barbara?
Yes, thank you.
And Michael, I took that incorrect reference to you. And other than that, it is as it works, except for the garage door reference. They omitted that exception, and I addressed that in the conditions of approval. They did not request that exception, so. There was some discussion. James brought it up. I spoke to Donna, and I spoke to the applicant's attorney. Some discussion about some sort of a warning system at the garage door for pedestrians. In fact, it was submitted with the working drawings and the application. So it's in the approval.
It's in there. It's in the approval.
It's in their file, and the attorney confirmed that.
Okay.
Okay, so all questions have been addressed, if I'm aware of.
...in that resolution that were by Mayor Moore and Jim Henry. That's not the case. I watched the video. Mayor, in fact, voted in favor of the project. Jim Henry voted against 316, but in favor of 700. So he would be recused from this one. And since we only have two or three people who are here then that would be eligible, if Mr. Carras wouldn't mind, I'd like to have everybody participate.
That's fine.
Yeah. I won't have a court.
All right, so everyone, everyone can vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That being said, yours.
From the entry, Carras, we have the applicant, 316 Main Avenue. Oh, I'll see. Just for the board's edification, the project that we're talking about here at 316 Main Street, block 2, 508, lot 1, had been previously approved by resolution dated February 7, 2022, having 24 residential units, ground floor retail, 19 parking spaces, access to the site or to the site is through the adjacent building at 700 Bangs Avenue. What we're doing tonight is seeking an amendment which is relatively minor, just a slight revision to the bedrooms. Bedroom count at 24 will remain the same. However, as opposed to currently, there are six two-bedroom units. That will be increased to nine two-bedroom units. Additionally, the front facade previously was encroaching upon the right-of-way. We are pulling that back as a result of the difficulties in trying to get the DOT to actually respond. So it was better just to pull it back after a year of trying, can't even get a response from them. Lastly, there's going to be a slight revision to the roof, nothing significant, and we'll have testimony as to that, and that has to do with the penthouse on the roof. With that being said, I'm going to have two witnesses tonight. Louis, I'm going to have you testify first as our engineer, just to go through the building itself and how we're coming out of that right-of-way. Just want to identify the engineering plans, the date of those plans, and the revision with regards to the right-of-way.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm testimony about the witness, telling the truth or the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
My name is Louis Zuegnere, Z-U-E-G-N-E-R.
And it's?
L-O-U-I-S.
Okay.
Louis, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as several other states, of engineering degree from Virginia Tech. Been practicing in the field for over 25 years. I'm the founding principal of the firm Mid-Atlantic Engineering. Testified before numerous planning and zoning boards across the state of New Jersey. I think maybe half a dozen among them count.
All right.
As long as everything's up to date?
Everything is up to date.
All right. Let's go.
Louis, you're familiar with this project at 316 Main Street, am I correct?
I am, yes.
All right, it's block 2, 508, lot 1, am I correct?
That's right.
And you're familiar with the plans and prepare at the mending the previously obtained site plan approval, am I correct?
I am, yes.
All right, what we're going to do, I'm going to mark those revised plans as A1 for identification with tonight's date, 1/27/2025. Am I correct, the last revision date is August 30, 2024?
That's correct.
All right, why don't we just go through the brief revisions to that site plan that you prepared?
So really, so little, it's hard to even go through in some ways, but is it possible for me to use a?
Use the board to step here.
I'm going to mark this in.
I'm going to mark the board as A2, and I'll hold it up for the board.
Thank you. So just briefly to explain what we have here, this is a colored rendering, sort of an amalgam of all the plans that are set in color, just to make it a little bit easier to follow than the engineering plans themselves. You can see to the left, up and down is County Road, Main Street, and Bangs Avenue is across the top. Our building's obviously at this intersection here, and it's a building that has some ground floor retail and parking. The real focus of the change, which was mentioned in the introduction, is this overhang that extends out into Main Street. I call it County Road, I'm sorry.
Can you, can you, can you show us?
State highway, yes.
Yeah, can you show us, since we have it right there?
So up and down on the left-hand side, this is Main Street, State Highway 71, Bangs Avenue across the top. And in the original plan, which was approved previously, there was an architectural element that came out around the corner of that building, extended out over the sidewalk into the right-of-way and from DOT road. It shouldn't have been something that I would have thought was that difficult to get permission from DOT. Turned out, after extended effort, it wasn't that we were told no, we really got no answer. So that removes that we can proceed with the building.
So the overhang is on the first floor, the top floor? Where was the overhang?
The overhang was above the first floor.
Okay.
And extended up on the?
Extended, yeah. Okay.
Oh, so the whole facade of the building above the first floor came out?
So now that was moved back, so there is no overhang into that state right-of-way, am I correct?
That's correct.
So ahead.
Okay.
Okay. Remains the same as the original.
Okay. We have the others? Or is someone else going to do the other two?
I'll have the architect.
Okay. So where's? Go ahead.
You solemnly swear or affirm testimony about the witness, telling the truth or the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Any questions?
I haven't seen this in a while, and I just want to make sure the layout is the same as the last I saw when I advised the city that it needed to come back. So the garage layout is the August, what date, version?
August 30, 2025.
Sorry, it's still projected. Go ahead.
But yeah, from a, from a site perspective, the, the parking, the access to it, and the work on the streets, the streetscapes, all of that remains the same.
Do we have any questions from the planning board members of the witness? No? Any questions by our professionals of the, of this witness? Okay. Any, any questions for the members of the public? I guess not.
Hearing none.
Okay, hearing none. Next.
Obi.
Yes.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm testimony about the witness, telling the truth or the whole truth or nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record and spell it.
My name is Obiora Agudosi, O-B-I-O-R-A. Last name is A-G-U-D-O-S-I.
Okay, I got that for the first time.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Please give the board the benefit of your qualifications.
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing for 39 years now. I was on the State Board of Architects for eight years. I was the president for New Jersey State Board of Architects for a year. So I've been.
You the architect that testified at the original application, right?
Yes.
And your, your license is in good standing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Obi, you're familiar with this property, clearly from your experience in the past with the application, am I correct?
Yes.
And there are certain updates that were made, relatively minor updates in the plan, am I correct?
Yes.
And you included those updates into a revised set of plans. Last revision date was August 30, 2024, am I correct?
Yes.
Today, though, we wanted to add just some information to the board's edification on page 8, 1.5. So we had additional information included in that provided to the board, am I correct?
Yes.
So what I want to do is I just want to identify as A3 with today's date, the submission set dated August 30 of 2024, okay?
Yes.
What we're going to do is mark as A4, I'm going to hand these out to the board with today's date.
A3 or A4?
A4 is the one-page, 1.5, with the revision date 1/27/2025, correct?
Yes.
And the reason we did that is we wanted to make sure that the calculations for the penthouse were on the plans, am I correct?
Yes.
We noticed that for some reason that calculation was missing. We wanted to make sure the board had that information, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, we're going to look at what's marked as A3 for identification. Plans are dated August 30, 2025. Can we go through the bedroom distribution?
Is it 2025 or 24?
2024.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll start with the bedroom, which starts on the second floor. Basically, all that we did was the unit that's behind the elevators was changed from a one-bedroom to two-bedroom. So the number of units stays the same. In terms of total count, we switched the one-bedroom to a two-bedroom layout. That's all that was done on all the floor plans.
And that was done on each floor, am I correct?
Yes, on each floor.
Why don't we show?
All right, just, just one sec, I'm sorry, just one second. Are we looking at A1.5, just what you gave us, or we're looking at something else now?
No, I said A3, which is the previous set. I just wanted to go, before we get to A5, A4, which is page A1.5, I just want to go through the other revision with regards to the test.
All right, A1.2?
Yes.
Okay.
So for A1.2, as I was indicating, behind the elevator is where this unit was changed to, from one-bedroom to two-bedroom.
Can you show us on here? And can you make it a little bigger? So we can see it?
There's the bluish-colored unit by the front.
Yes.
All right, so what happened to this unit?
That unit was changed from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom. Everything still works. So it was repeated on this level, you know, all the way up. The number of units remains the same. The sizes are very comfortable and nice, so we maintain that.
So nothing changed, but you got another bedroom?
Yeah, because the former bedroom was, you know, it was a one-bedroom, but it wasn't efficiently laid out.
Okay.
Improved on it.
Okay.
So as opposed to having two two-bedroom units on each floor, you now have three bedroom, uh, two-bedroom units?
Yeah. So that was the main thing that changed on, in terms of the floor plan. The second item that was of consequence is, which is what was discussed by Andy earlier on, is on the front of the building, from second floor up, we were overhanging, you know, and we, because we, original plan was to create area of interest at the corner of Main and, and Bangs Avenue. But again, due to the difficulties of connecting with DOT, we pulled everything back. And by doing that, you know, we reduced the over, overhang that was currently anticipated. So there's no more overhang to the building.
So is there any articulation at the corner there, or is it just flat?
Well, it's, we used the materials to define it, you know.
Why don't we show that?
Yeah, I was going to walk through that.
Right, but, but based on what you've just said, has anything changed with those units internally?
Internally, pretty much the same, except that what we ended up doing is, again, modifying the unit layout. Not, we really didn't modify it, but it's, it just got a little bit, you know, because this area here was hanging out, if you notice where I'm pointing to?
Oh, it was hanging out?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, into the area of where, especially on this bump out here, if you imagine this area here, it was a little bit out here and, and coming around here. And then this area, from here back, where a little bit, you know, over that right-of-way. Normally, this kind of architectural impediments are acceptable, but again, due to the challenges that we had trying to get that confirmation, we decided to just, you know, stay within the property line.
So how many, how, how, how many inches, feet are we losing in articulation for that, in that area?
I have to...
Because I see that says 23 feet 3 1/8 inch, but I'm not sure what, I think that that's just, that's a, that's a length, not a, it doesn't tell you how much we're losing in, in the master bedroom, it looks like.
Yeah, it, I think before we were, if I recall, I have to look at the old plans, we were like about, I think 18 inches, 12, 15 inches out. That's my recollection, but I can.
On both sides or just on the side?
On, on.
That's bad, facing Bangs? Or the side that's facing Main?
The corner, Main as well as Bangs.
So 18 inches on both sides?
No, the, the one for Bangs was less, the one for, for Main Street was a little bit more. We pulled everything back.
So, so the 1,089 square feet, that's the new measurement to the living area?
Yes.
So it was larger, right?
It was larger.
Am I correct, it was 1,094 square feet, 103 square? So you're losing five square feet?
Five, five square feet or something. Yeah.
Relatively.
So with that said, the next item that, of interest that we modified had to do with the roof. Now that we had to pull back on the roof, the profile of the building, the area of the roof reduced. And because the area of the roof reduced, the percentage of the penthouse that we had before, now, you know, there's less area, so we had to, you know, make sure that the penthouse is, still falls, you know, below the 20%, within the 20% requirement.
Because the roof area is less.
Yeah, it's less now.
So like you had to reduce the size of the penthouse too?
Yeah, yeah, we just pulled the, the walls. If you look here, we indicated the dimension, which is highlighted. Yeah, it used to be a little bit closer to Bangs, so we pulled it back a little bit.
And that overhang that you had, that was just an architectural device, in other words?
Yes, you know, yeah. So, so we had to now pull this line of wall back a little bit. We reduced the size of the penthouse, so that way we can fall within the prescribed percentage that's needed. And the calculation up here, which, which is all clouded.
Is that on 5?
Yeah, A5, yeah. A1.5, so. So that's the change that was made. And in terms of the elevation?
So, so, is, because there's multiple penthouses, yes? Yeah.
Yes.
So all of them had to be changed?
All, everyone along Bangs, we pulled it in, because they, again, we didn't want any of the, a particular unit to have to be the one that's reduced. So we figured that, you know, pulling the wall back uniformly, so everything still looks the same when you look at it visually.
When you say pull it back, you're talking about moving it away more from Bangs Avenue?
Yeah, from Bangs Avenue, not away from Bangs, which is actually better.
So was that done with the terraces too, then?
Uh, yes. Yeah, we, we moved everything back. Again, you know, the, the, the difference was probably less than 12 inches, you know, of the pullback that we did, so that, you know.
And that result in the penthouse percentage of 19.2%, am I correct?
Yeah, 19.2, yes.
And that's in accordance with the CBD redevelopment plan, am I correct?
Yes. So the next implication of that is the elevation. As you can see, this is the elevation of Bangs, and this, the area on the right side used to, from second floor up, used to hang out. There used to be an overhang there, so we pulled that in. Everything else pretty much stays the same, except for that corner where we made that change.
So essentially, we were looking at that particular view. It's just pulling out of the right-of-way, that articulation that was going onto Bangs and also right-of-way to the State Highway, am I correct?
Yes.
So now you're right aligned with the property line, property, am I correct?
Yes. Other than that, everything else is pretty much the way it used to be.
All right, wasn't, wasn't there a removal of a parking spot, or was that a different, or am I making that up?
Not, my.
No, because I, I thought that I read somewhere in a, in a summary that, that one parking spot was removed?
Changed the compact spot.
Or they changed, yeah, compact spot was, something happened with the compact spot? Let me see if I.
So, I can help you clarify that.
Sorry?
In a memo we had done over the summer last year, advising the city of the changes, the layout in the parking garage was not as had been approved. That described those changes, what's here now is what's supposed to be.
Okay. All right, so that's what it was, because I remember I did that.
But one of the building changes, didn't you also take all the balconies off the third and fourth? Is only balconies on the second floor now? Are there? We've seen a couple versions of this, but one version, the balconies were removed.
Yeah, it's been a while. Yes, we, we always had a Juliet back, they are not like.
No, 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 on the back side.
On the back side.
Yeah, there's nothing, it's nothing on the third floor. So the, there were balconies all the way up?
No, but.
Where?
One of my notes was the balconies on the second floor were removed. Because you pushed, you're pushing that wall out. But I don't know if you changed that between April and August.
Yeah, we, we are, we're still, because we have the roof. Yeah, I, I don't, I have to.
Well, on these plans, we have balconies. We have balconies everywhere.
Which, and I'm looking at A6 from 1018, 2021, which was the last architectural plan submitted. And this appears consistent with what was in those plans.
Right, and over here on this, which is A3.0, there are balconies everywhere. So that's?
Yeah, what I'm looking at is consistent.
Okay. So we've got balconies everywhere.
On the top of floors.
So we concur that it's, all the balconies are here.
Yeah, on, on the second floor, yes.
Yes.
What's on the second floor?
Yeah, just on the second.
They're on the second floor.
Balconies on the.
Well, I'm seeing balconies everywhere.
No, 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 a full walkout balcony.
Oh, we're talking about not on Bangs, we're talking about the back of the building.
Yeah.
Okay, so those, those are there, and those will be made. Okay.
Just Juliet.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they're on the second floor.
So they're only on the second?
Juliet's on the front, and then the balcony is on the second floor.
Only on the second.
And those appear both in the approved plans, A6, and also in the plans that we submitted tonight.
Okay.
And then, so can you clarify with the total number of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and no three-bedroom, right, just ones and twos?
There are nine two-bedroom, and that would leave 15 one-bedroom?
Yeah, one, two, yeah, five on each floor times the number of floors, yeah.
So 15 ones and nine twos?
Yeah.
As opposed to six or two on each floor, correct?
Okay.
And to, to be clear also is that our parking requirement is 1.5 per unit, not based on bedrooms.
That is correct. That's the CBD.
That's really unfortunate thing. Okay. Okay. I don't know if anybody else is concerned about this, but I'm having a hard time visualizing what is being removed, so that, because we wanted the corner to be.
Side by.
To, to be significant, or just have something that, that you can see, that, that, that is, that, that stands out. And I understand that we can't do what we wanted to. So can you tell me what we will be doing instead of what we wanted to do? Can, do you have a rendering of what it's going to be?
I have the, I have the elevation of it, but not the.
Well, if you have, if you have, like, a rendering, like.
Well, this is A3.0.
Yeah, but that's just a.
Yeah, that doesn't show me what it was or is going to be.
Yeah, we don't.
No, that we don't.
Yeah, we don't have that. I don't, it, it's, it's not, it's not as projected into the space, but everything is pretty much the same.
All right, how about?
I don't disagree with you.
All right, how about if we go this way? Can you show me what we approved? In a rendering, in color, that I can see?
A6.
Okay, can we, can we get that on the screen, so that everyone can see that?
I don't have.
Yeah, somebody has that. I don't know if anybody else is having a problem with that, but I, I struggle. I need, I need a little bit more visual.
Yeah, I can tell you, I contacted and I tried to get the DOT.
Not, not, not questioning. Yeah, not questioning that. Can you, I know some of us have it on, on.
I have it on.
Yeah, let me see if I can.
On laptops. But what, what's, what's coming off of there? What is specifically coming out?
This whole gray part.
The gray part's not going to be there?
No, no, so here it's sticking out.
Right.
It's not going to stick out anywhere, it's going to be flush with the rest of it.
So are we still going to have, like, the two, the two windows on the Bangs and one large window on, on Main?
Yes, everything stays the same.
All right, but what's, yeah, I'm, I'm struggling.
Except for the overhang. It pushes out.
It's the same wall, but the wall's just pulled back?
Yes, to, to, you know. It doesn't project out.
Same color, same finish.
Everything is the same, yes.
Right, but that's, over here, we have it out, like, let's say a little bit over a foot? And that foot's going to go back, but the coloring is going to be the same, so it gives the impression that it stays? That it stands out?
Eight thirteen.
Maybe? Less, less ideal.
2021?
Yeah. And the resolution's from February 2022.
Look at the roof.
There you go.
I don't know why.
I thought they were proposing that for Sunset Lake.
The windows are different on Bangs.
Yeah, I don't know why it's coming out.
Yeah, street panel, lot two. That's different than what we approved.
Listen, this is the Main Street front edge, so this is.
That's different, it's, it's different.
This is in 21, this is in 21.
Okay.
I don't know why this is coming out.
I think I got it. You found it?
Yeah.
So I have a color elevation drawing.
Okay.
And so basically, the difference between the original approved and now these revised
Can, can we, can we all see?
I don't know. I don't have.
No, but it's not.
I don't have the right connector. You don't have HDMI.
No, I don't have Wi-Fi. I can try.
The TV's not Wi-Fi. But you can email it to him.
Oh.
Email.
Yeah, do you want to email it to me?
I, yeah, I probably could, okay. So basically, the thing that changes is the siding has a vertical panel, right?
Right.
So in the original, there are basically three panels between the windows and the edge of the building.
Right.
Now, there's only like one and a half panels between the window and the edge of the building.
Right, but are, are we?
Because that's what's taking, that's where the.
But do we still have the two windows on Bangs, which does not look like we have two windows on Bangs, it looks like we have three windows on Bangs.
It's a triple window, and then there's a small.
Sleeve on the side.
Thick, single rectangle window.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not what's in the rendering.
Yeah, that, that's an old rendering.
This is better, though, because it matches the rest of the building.
Not that?
Not that. Show me which one that is, what we're looking at. This one.
This is with the approved render. Yeah, that's the approved.
Right, but that's, this is the change. Right, but all right. I get it. Now, here's my concern, is you're telling me what the change is. We're verbally discussing it, and now there are window changes. I didn't know there were window changes.
The original one, it's these two little windows. And then the updated one, there's the three panel with the Juliet. This was what was approved.
This is it. Okay, from October. All right, so the approved one was October seven twenty twenty one.
Yes.
See if you get it.
What's the date of August thirteen twenty twenty?
So what do you open? Which version do you have there?
This is August thirteenth twenty two.
I'm trying to find. Did you email it to them?
We have twenty twenty one.
Yeah, the resolution was dated February twenty twenty two. So the hearing date was, come with the resolution.
There was a gap for some reason.
Yeah.
That was the windowless bedroom problem? No, that was.
Ten come through, yeah.
All right.
Can I plug in today?
Hearing dates were September thirteenth of twenty one and October eighteenth of twenty one. And then my resolution. That's the first one I sent you too. Was adopted on the thirty seventh. That's it.
No signal.
There we go.
There we go. That's what, okay.
That's what.
Triple window.
There you go, it has the triple window.
Yes.
So all the triple windows are staying. The only difference is this coming out here. Right? So it's, you don't get this definition.
Yes, it's not.
But it's going to be flat.
Everything is pulled, pushed in here. That's the only difference.
Right, so you don't get the depth.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And on the right side, which is here, along the banks, it also pulls out. We don't have that. Because that's what started the whole issue. Other than that, everything else is.
Materials stay the same?
Yes.
The coloring is all the same? Everything's the same? Windows are the same? No difference?
Yes.
So white banding that's around it and everything that all stays the same?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So you'd say on this side, this was what, six inches? And you said that was brought out like eighteen inches?
No, no, the banks have a new one.
Yeah.
I mean, the main street was more. I think it was either twelve or eighteen. That's what I'm trying to recover. But along, along the, along banks, it wasn't as much. But, you know, we had to pull both of them back.
But still, the definition won't, the depth definition won't be there.
Yeah, but we use material to.
The materials are all, yes.
To define that corner.
All right, I understand. Thank you for.
Sorry, it's been a while.
No, no, that's okay, but we got there.
This started twenty nineteen, so we're back on four days.
That's right, we ended up in a place we needed to be.
Yeah.
So that's what matters. Does anybody, do any planning board members have any questions for this witness?
I do.
Go.
My first question.
Go. Look at you.
On the two bedroom. The new two bedroom, that used to be a one bedroom.
Yeah.
When you designed it, so you confident that that's of sufficient size for a two bedroom? Because you have, right next to it, you have the two one bedrooms that are even larger in terms of square footage than that two bedroom.
Yeah, hold on, let me pull up the one that we were looking at now. I'm pulling it up on the screen.
Oh, okay.
These are like, you know, Manhattan sized.
Or that's wow.
Yeah.
Not that's what it is maybe.
One bedroom, seven hundred and something square feet.
Yes.
Right, but now it's a two bedroom.
Yes, I'm comfortable that that works. It meets the minimum requirements in terms of room sizes.
Okay.
Yes, the one bedroom, you know, for, the only reason why we're able to make that a two bedroom is because when you do residential units like this, what matters is the area of the frontage, how much area you have facing the street. So if you look at that one, you can see that we're able to put three windows, ten, 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 thirty feet. Whereas the two bedrooms, they are deeper, but you are limited by, you have a living room and a bedroom, you are done. But this one, we're able to put a living room, bedroom, bedroom, because, you know, we have that width for the window.
So the apartment is actually wider.
Yeah, yeah, in terms of street frontage. You can see from, you know, from there that you have those three bays. Whereas for the two bedrooms, you know, you don't. So that's why. And also, if you notice, the one bedroom, the one bedroom has a study, right? That's in the back.
Right.
Because there's no window. So because of that.
So it can't be that.
Yeah, so the other one gives you more flexibility in terms of the street frontage.
Sorry, what's the square footage of the two and the one ballpark?
The two bedroom, right now, we have about seven hundred and eighteen square feet. The one bedroom is about seven. One bedroom and a study is about seven sixty four. It's not just one bedroom, it's, you know.
But then you have, yeah, there's still two bedrooms that are fronted on Main Street that are over a thousand square.
Yeah.
So that's what I thought you said earlier. Okay.
Go ahead, I have a question. So the New Jersey Department of Transportation didn't respond, but bangs is a city street. So if you wanted to, you could overhang bangs potentially, right?
But it's not, it's going to look awkward.
Right, it would look awkward, I agree. But I'm looking at Main Street now. Your building is right on the property line, whereas the old bank building is set back maybe like a foot. So there's potentially, you could pull the main part of the ground floor wall on Main Street back a foot, so you could still have the overhang over main. Wouldn't be an overhang, it would just be up to your property line. And you could overhang on bangs.
Actually, the bank building is on the property. There are parts of it that are pulled back when you go into the lobby area, the entrance, but from what I recall, that building sits on the property line.
I'm looking at your plan right now, A one point one. Looks like this building actually extends out. I mean, it's not into the right of way, obviously. But the bulk of the building goes out further towards the street than the bank building. So I'm just saying, there's a potential opportunity to just pull this building maybe like nine, twelve inches away from Main Street. So then you could do the bump out higher up, but it would still be within your property line.
Then we'll be taking space from the commercial space below and then potentially affect the parking. We've made the analysis and based on that. You know, so you pull it back, the whole building is overhanging. It defeats the purpose of concentrating at the corner, which is where you want the effect to be felt. So that's why in looking at all that, it just made sense to still maintain the materials that we have, still define that corner without, you know, pushing it out.
And also, when you look at the C B D redevelopment plan, if I recall, it calls for buildings to be ready for the street.
Any other questions from the planning board members? Any questions from our professionals? Any questions from the public? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing for.
Okay. Any statements from the planning board members regarding this application? Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to open up for comments to the public? Second. All in favor?
Yeah, sorry, the.
That's okay.
All, yeah, so none?
None.
The public, all in favor?
Aye.
Want you to close up a comment? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye seven.
Okay. Any comments by the board members for the, for this project? Any comments that they would like to include in the approval or denial? Nothing?
I think it's unfortunate that.
I think it's very unfortunate.
That architectural flourish, I'll call it, at the corner has to go away. And I know you guys flagged, so I'm going to blame N J D O T on this one. It's really unfortunate. But I don't know what else you do.
Well, I think perhaps maybe for, in the future, when we see this situation on Main Street, we take that into consideration and maybe D O T will not respond. And take that into account on the design. It may take off a couple of inches from the internal space, maybe. But I'm just saying that. I agree with you. It's really unfortunate because that corner was, was to be a standout corner. Anybody else have anything else that they'd like to include? Okay. Here we go. All right, I guess that we don't have any, any conditions?
My resolution will say anything that's not been changed as a result of this will remain the same with the prior approvals. All those prior conditions of approval remain in effect, except for these one, two, or three modifications.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve this request?
Second.
Jane Fanano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Catherine McWallin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak? I do, but I do want to, for us to consider in the future, any other Main Street work that's going to get done. We have to think that this might happen.
I'm sure you're doing a good job of letting the applicants know that because, and I agree with you, D O T is a pain to work with. We don't have the punch to do it done with the Main Street itself. So if you have anything else you build on Main Street.
It's a shame because so much can be done on Main Street with articulation. And when I tell you the amount of times I try to contact them and try to get a response, it just stagnates already.
They have a new commissioner, who we've had success with getting answers recently. If you want, in the future, to reach out to that.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
All right, so. Did we do the motion for vote? We did.
I did.
Okay, all right. Now, we have one other, thank you. We have one other item to discuss?
Yeah, I want to bring you up to date on the parking arrangement with the Interfaith Neighbors Project on Springfield. I've reviewed the lease agreement, which was part of your decision that came over. Changes that I had were to make sure that these, the lease agreement itself is for twenty years with a twenty year option. Forty years, however, the project, as long as the project is there, they have to maintain their parking. And the lease agreement originally only said weekends and the like. I have addressed that with Mr. Mamoora. And I'll make this part of the record. I received a letter that he said that he wants to confirm this, that Interfaith Neighbors operates on a four day work week, Monday through Friday, it's closed on the weekends, and thus no need for parking on Saturdays and Sundays. Interfaith acknowledges that it has site control for its off-site parking for a period of forty years after the center is open. At that time, they'll either need to renew the lease or obtain an alternate arrangement to satisfy the city's parking requirements. And that they're going to submit a copy of the reported memorandum of lease when available, but in any event, drive the issuance of the building. They're going to do something else. I'm requiring them to add to the title for the property that is owned by Interfaith Neighbors, the condition of approval that says that they must maintain this parking. So that if they ever go to sell that project, title search will reveal that there's a recorded condition of planning board approval that says you've got to have these X amount of parking spaces or else. So that this way, after I'm long gone, forty years from now, there'll be something that will pop up that will keep their toes in the fire. And also, if the church decides to do anything, their memorandum of lease is recorded as well. And so there, they can't take away that parking over a period of forty years. What happens if Interfaith Neighbors, since it's only a lease, what happens if Interfaith Neighbors default under their lease? And so the church then would have the right to reject them from the property for their parking. So what happens to the project?
You can go in and shut them down. You're required to have this parking.
I understand. But since it's only a lease, they could default on the lease.
But it says under our law in the City of Asbury Park that they can have property, parking off-site. And that's what they provided. And that's how the project was approved.
So the project would be shut down if they were.
Yeah, you have every right to reinforce the conditions of approval and say, look, fellas, you know, obviously, you'd say, we're going to give you a month or two, whatever it is. You're not going to just go in the next day and shut them down. But practically speaking, you're going to tell them, you're going to come up with another parking arrangement, or your approvals are going to be revoked. And we're going to have a major problem here.
Don't we already have a problem that, I disagree with them. They're not open four days a week. If they have a museum, it's a summertime museum to get tourists, they're not operating on Saturdays and Sundays?
This is their representation.
Well, I disagree with the representation.
Well, actually, what it might be, John and Jack, is that, are they saying that Interfaith Neighbors, or is the museum a separate entity?
It is.
If it's a separate entity, then what do they have to provide on the weekends? Or is there enough parking underneath?
Do we distinguish the parking required for each item?
We did not.
Oh, we did.
Well, no, no, we said the building, wasn't it?
Yes.
The residential gets a certain number of spaces.
Downstairs, right?
The commercial space has a certain rate, and the museum had a different rate. It's in our report from, it's a year now.
But those are under the building?
Well, and again, I don't remember how many of each type, like, there's definitely enough for all the residences to be accommodated under the building.
Right.
Is there enough to also accommodate whatever is attributed to the museum? Off the top of my head, I don't know.
That's, I'm going to.
I'm inclined to say yes, because it's only eight apartments, and they have like twenty spaces. How many, how many are they renting?
Yeah, but they're saying that we're not going, they don't have the space.
Yeah, but the museum is, the museum isn't going to use twelve spaces or not required to have twelve spaces. It's much less. Because it's less than the office.
The spaces, the off-site spaces are only available on Monday through Friday?
Right. For when the office is in business.
So what does the museum then do for, is there a parking on the weekends?
I believe there's sufficient parking on-site I believe there's sufficient parking on-site to accommodate the museum and the residents. But we'd have, I'd have to look at our reports and look at the calculation.
So when, when the museum has a special opening, or a special event, or a special
On a Friday night. That's not taken into consideration in the calculations.
Right. That was, that was on the street, right?
It's whatever it is, whether it's a Monday through Friday, or a weekend, or evening, or, because again, the whole thing with the offsite parking is a shared arrangement, we had to do that whole calculation of
Right.
Which, which, you know, which is the daytime use and which is the nighttime use? And then how many offsite spaces they needed. And even though they had changed the size of the, of the commercial space? And they needed fewer spaces offsite? They still got the lease for the larger number of spaces.
All right.
But, you know, it's a valid concern, I don't know if it rises to the level of amendment, though.
Well, it, it
It's a distinct change.
Well, to me, it arises to whether or not this is okay.
Right, but is it a, should the public be considered in that consideration? Because it was part of their variance. And now we're, they're altering what they had testified to.
I don't see that, I, I, I'm not going to complicate it.
Okay.
More, more concerning to me is if you have questions, I'll tell them to come back in and explain themselves.
It's just, I think that, that, just like John said, is that, that there is a museum, and I can't imagine a museum is going to be open Monday to Friday, I mean, Monday to Thursday. And they're representing this as Interfaith. I'm saying it's the building, but it's not. So for Interfaith, they go to Monday through Thursday, into the church, there they go. I don't know where the museums, do we have enough? And we don't, we don't remember that enough right now to, to be able to answer that question.
We can find out.
I'm saying.
Tell them to come back in and explain themselves, if you like.
I
Right, because
I think that that probably makes sense.
Go sets or somebody to man the museum, also, where do they park?
Right. Because we did, like Donna said, we did divvy up, we calculated it, we just don't remember what it is right now. But
One of the things that Dan brought out is, is the Is the whole concept of the offsite parking, whether or not There's certain risks and rewards to all of these things, when you have this offsite parking situation. Unless they own the offsite spots, you're always going to run the risk of a breach of a lease agreement. There's always
At some point.
There's always the potential for problems.
But that's allowed for in city orders, correct?
Yes.
Whether you like it or not.
Yes.
I, I, I don't know how, what the best way to resolve it is, but if the best way to resolve it is to have them come in here to talk to us for a few minutes?
Yeah, they, they haven't broken the ground, it sounds like they need an answer tonight.
No, they don't need, they don't need an answer tonight.
Don't mind their old business and have them come in and explain how this is going to work.
For, for both?
Like Donna said, will there be enough spaces on-site?
On-site for the museum?
When you lose the parking spaces on the weekend to operate, have to be apartments and for the
And for the museum.
For whatever usage you're going to have.
Yes. I, I mean, I know that I would feel better about that, I don't know if you guys are okay. So, should we have them come, come back for a few minutes to, to explain?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we'd like, if you don't mind.
I'll let John know and we'll, uh, we'll put them on, unless it rises to another condition? Or a variance or something like that, wouldn't be any notice.
At the same time, I, I can't see why they wouldn't be able just to write a letter like this, that says, that says the museum will be open on the weekends, and there are enough parking spots, X amount of parking spots For the, for the museum goers.
I'd rather have them come in
That's fine.
So this way you have questions they can answer them.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, bring them in, it's old business, it won't take long.
But if they do send a letter to Jack that says, we have enough spaces on-site for all the residents and for the museum all the time, nights, weekends, whatever, then do we need to hear from them again?
I think with that, with the new letter, and with everybody looking at the original agreement, who the spaces were dedicated to, it may preempt them coming back. Both of them.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask John Memore to address that, he, he may opt to say, look, maybe it's easier for him to come back.
That's fine.
But if he can give us such a letter, perhaps Donna can look up the mix? And let me know, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, that's our hang-up, right, it's parking for the museum
And that's our, on, on the weekends, on the weekends and Fridays.
So if they can give us a letter that says we have enough space for our residents and the museum
And this is how many?
On weekends?
Yes.
Then I
I don't see, I don't see that to be a problem.
Yeah, okay.
And Donna will use that, give it to me.
Yep.
They put it right on, they'll go five day work week.
The residential needs eleven, not twenty.
On-site, chair?
Yes. Just a second, just a second.
I just looked it up.
Yeah?
So, so the museum requires three spaces. Residential requires eleven, that's fourteen spaces.
Fourteen spaces, and
Twenty spaces in a lot.
And we have twenty spaces, we only need fourteen.
So on-site, there are enough spaces seven days a week for the residences and the museum.
Would you mind, Jack, and I don't know if you guys feel like this, that if he can include that in the letter?
Yeah.
Well, I'm good to go there.
You want his letter to
Yeah, to include the museum hours, how many days, how many spaces? It sounds like we have enough, but I, you know, I don't want to jump to something that someone didn't testify for.
I'll ask them to verify more details, because more points to
Do we need any, because was this formal, so do we need a motion, or do we, are we good? Okay. All right.
Put your picture.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And then none opposed.